Good evening. Welcome to a meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, 1,036th Meeting, May 12, 2015. Tonight we have a special action agenda, which is going to start off with a pledge of allegiance, I believe, so. Mr. Brown, would you?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, if I may, we do have some proclamations this evening.
Absolutely.
We are pleased to honor students for their achievements in the Future Business Leaders of America, North Penn Chapter, so we can have those students and their advisor, Linda Westerland, please come forward.
It is my honor to be able to introduce these students to you here tonight. These are members of the North Penn Chapter of the Future Business Leaders of America. I do have 22 students that actually placed and should be here tonight, but with several things going on, including AP testing tomorrow, several of them chose to stay home and study, I'm afraid. So, not afraid, that's a good thing, but anyway. I just want to let you know a little bit about what FBLA does. They do have competitive events that these students can compete in, and there's a huge variety of events. There's everything from individual events like accounting and business calculations, to group events like marketing and management information systems, to performance events like job interview and emerging business issues, creative events like e-business and public service announcement, and computer events like desktop publishing and computer applications. We start out competing at the local level. If they place, then they compete at regionals, they compete at states, and then if they place high enough, they can go on to the national conference. We have nine students that will advance to the national conference this summer in Chicago. Before I introduce you to the students, though, I do want to point out, the North Penn Chapter was recognized with two state chapter events that we won this year. First, we have the fifth-largest chapter in the state, and I did check, there are 299 chapters in the state, so we're fifth out of 299. There were more than 10 chapters. And we also placed fourth in the outstanding chapter category, so we did get recognition for our chapter for that. So I'm going to read the names of the students that aren't here as well, and I can quickly go through, I'll let you know who they are, what they placed, and what event they placed in. We do have a team at the beginning. We have Leah Kaplan, Elaine Liu, and Lynn Nguyen, and they placed ninth in partnership with business.
Congratulations, well done for yourself and the team. Congratulations. Can we get it right? Congratulations, well done for yourself.
All right, I have another group, Jacob Diamond, Colin McConaughey, and Shannon Quinn, and they placed ninth in marketing.
Congratulations, well done for yourself. Excellent. Congratulations, well done for yourself.
Tom Rosensky placed eighth in business law.
Sir? Excellent, well done for yourself.
We had another team, Annie Shi and Evelyn Ma placed seventh in desktop publishing, Sid Shondren placed sixth in help desk, Chris Yang placed sixth in business math, Harrison Barclay placed sixth in networking concepts, Kevin Chin, Max Ives, Jason Rowland, and Eric McKenna. That is a group of four. First, they placed at the state level in public service announcement, and they also placed or qualified in the Launchpad category at the national level. That is a national event, so we'll wait to see how they make out there. Chris Shea placed fourth in database design, Serena Jiang placed fourth in economics, Yang Yu placed third in business math.
Sir? Congratulations, well done for yourself. Congratulations to you.
Caitlin Corelli placed third in job interview.
Miss Corelli, congratulations, well done for yourself. Congratulations to you.
And Jerry Zhao placed first in the state in computer applications. Peter Lawrence is another student that placed or has qualified for the national competition in the Launchpad event, and that is my kids.
Congratulations.
They got it down. Been here before.
Congratulations again, well done.
Congratulations again. Could you do me a favor, just lead everybody around one more time? I want to recognize Mrs. Westerland. Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations again. Congratulations again.
One second. Job interview.
Again, congratulations to you, congratulations.
Tennessee, Tennessee.
Before we finish with you, we want to talk to you, so come back to the podium for a minute.
Yeah, we're going to have to go back to the podium, just finish around. I told them to go around.
Thank you very much.
I will.
Yes, I'm sorry. Mrs. Westerland didn't know this, but I did ask the students just to circle around again. There's a reason for that, we want to recognize Mrs. Westerland, because she was named the Pennsylvania Outstanding Advisor of the Year.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
And her name now will be found on the Advisor Wall of Fame in Reston, Virginia. She's been involved with FBLA for 22 years, she's served as a region advisor for 21 years, Pennsylvania FBLA State Officer Advisor for three of the last five years, and she's currently active on the Board of Directors for the FBLA for Pennsylvania. So we want to recognize her for outstanding accomplishment here.
Thank you.
Great job, Linda.
Thank you very much, thank you.
As always, I would like to remind everybody that this will be rebroadcast, so you can see it again, Wednesday and Thursday and Friday at 7:30, and also Monday at 12:30 PM. But Linda, as a fellow FBLA advisor in another school district with the ninth-largest club in the state, I can tell you that it's an amazing feat to see how far you have taken your club, and a lot of credit to the students, but especially to you as an FBLA advisor, and winning such a top honor among some of the best business computers and information technology teachers in the state.
Thank you very much.
Very special, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure you realize it at the time, but when you got that award, I got an immediate text message from Mr. Shapinski.
Oh, I know.
So it came through real quickly thereafter and said, "Woo, Linda got Advisor of the Year for Pennsylvania."
Thank you, it was a surprise, for sure.
He aspires to someday.
That's right, following your footsteps, absolutely.
That's right.
Thank you.
So another big round of applause for you guys, too. Yeah, yeah, I want to make sure everybody gets these, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Feel free to join if you want to join your kids, go ahead. You're released. I do, I do, again, really appreciate the hard work that goes into running a club, such a big club, but beyond that, her ability to shine amongst even the advisors that are out there. So it's phenomenal. It's another badge of honor for North Penn.
One year, huh?
All right, before we start our special action agenda, we're going to move forward with Audience of Citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address. All right, we will move forward with, I want a motion, recommend approval of the adoption of the 2015-16 proposed final budget resolution in the amount of $234,898,007, and the authorization to publish notice to adopt the final budget in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code and the Act per BA 2.
It's moved.
Second, motion made by Mr. Brown. Sorry, I made the motion, but, second if I'm Mr. O'Donnell, and now we can have discussion.
And we do have a presentation, Mr. Scrackey, our business administrator will be making a presentation. You'll be able to follow along on this PowerPoint. We have it behind us, of course, and then we also have the monitors to each side.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the 2015-16 proposed final budget. As you might recall, this is really the second phase in a three-phase approach for passage of a school district's budget. The first phase, the board approved the preliminary budget back in February of this year. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of the proposed final budget, and in June, at the action meeting, we'll be asking for approval of the final budget. So we're in phase two at this point in time. So what that means is continual changes will be made up to the final budget passage. The budget is not set in stone at this point in time. So tonight, I'd like to talk about, just a quick snapshot review of what we're recommending for the proposed final budget, and talk about some of the major expenditure highlights, talk about the revenue highlights, and finally, the tax impact based on our recommendation. So I think the three biggest challenges facing the school district in the upcoming year would really be piecers, piecers, and more piecers. We'll talk about that quite a bit tonight. And piecers, as you know, stands for the Pennsylvania Public School Employee Retirement System. This is the pension system that governs Pennsylvania public school employees. So there's no question that we are in crisis mode when it comes to the pension obligation. It's affecting North Penn School District, just like it is every school district in the Commonwealth. We'll talk about some specific numbers, but for at least a third or fourth or fifth straight year, this is the number-one driving force behind the budget for the upcoming year. Okay, let's talk about a quick snapshot of the budget, the proposed final budget. We are recommending a $234.9 million budget, and this represents about a $7.86 million increase in expenses over the 14-15 year. That's about 3.46% in terms of total expenditures. We are recommending the Act I tax increase limit of 1.9%. So the numbers we'll look at tonight already include a 1.9% tax increase in terms of the real estate revenue that we're showing. So even with the 1.9% tax increase, we still have a budget deficit of about $2.56 million. And we'll talk later in the presentation about how we plan on balancing the budget with fund balance. Hypothetically, what would it take to actually balance a budget, knowing that our Act I limit is 1.9%? Well, it would take about 3.5% to actually come up with a balanced budget where we're at now. Okay, quick budget comparison of the proposed final budget 15-16 versus 14-15. Again, I mentioned earlier that our expenditures are roughly 3.46% higher than the current budget year. Our revenues are up about 4.15%, but again, just a reminder, that includes the 1.9% Act I index, the revenue that's generated from that in taxes. So we do still have a budget deficit of $2.5 million. The current-year budget that was passed last June by the school board had a $3.9 million deficit, so the deficit is about $1.4 million lower than it was in the current fiscal year. I'd like to highlight some of the changes from the preliminary budget that was passed in February to the proposed final budget we're recommending for this evening. We did mention back in February that it was a very preliminary budget. We were very conservative with some of the expenditure figures, as well as the revenue figures. We didn't really have adequate information regarding the governor's proposed budget at that point in time, so a lot has happened. A lot of changes have been made from February until now. And on the revenue side, just to highlight, the total changes represent about $1.1 million. So our revenues have been increased from the preliminary budget to tonight by about a half of 1%, $1.1 million. That's good news. Revenues are up since February. On the expenditure side, expenditures are down, another good picture, down about 1.3%. So the preliminary budget was passed with a $6.7 million deficit, and that also included a 1.9% recommended tax increase. So from February to now, we have lowered the deficit from $6.7 million to $2.5 million. And we'll continue to look for ways to lower the expenditure figures or raise revenue figures in the upcoming month before final budget adoption. So we were able to lower the deficit by a total of roughly $4.2 million since February. Definitely good news. Okay, I'd like to highlight some of the major expenditure increases that we're facing for the upcoming year. And at the top of the list, of course, is piecers, the pension obligation. Just this one line item alone represents an approximate $6.5 million to our budget, a huge increase. Keep in mind, though, that we do receive half of that increase back in the form of a state subsidy from the Department of Education. So our net increase is roughly $3.25 million, but on the expenditure side, it's nearly $6.5 million, tremendous increase. On salaries, a $4.35 million increase. Now, this includes contractual salary increases. We do have two new contracts that are in place, and includes those contractual salary increases. It also includes 7.9 FTE, or full-time equivalent positions. And those positions are 3.5 FTEs for special education, 2.0 positions for elementary due to potential enrollment growth or large class sizes, 1.4 FTE for ESL, and 1.0 for secondary at the high school. So total salary increase is about $4.3 million. Also, another major driving force on the expenditure side is for technology lease expenses, $1.3 million. And this is for some major infrastructure upgrades, hardware replacements, teacher laptop replacements, as part of the technology equipment replacement cycle, but a large expense coming onboard for the upcoming year. You might recall, we did the second phase of the Hatfield Elementary School debt service borrowing back in January of this year, so that debt service, the repayment of principal and interest, that comes onboard for that second phase next year, and that totals roughly Also, I know there's been many presentations to committees and to the board regarding a new textbook series adoption, and that totals about $1.1 million. I do want to note that that figure is dramatically lower than the preliminary budget for two reasons. Number one, we were able to successfully negotiate a substantial reduction in the total purchase price, number one. And secondly, in order to get teacher material here, prior to the teachers leaving for the summer, we are basically expediting a piece of the order, $500,000 will actually come from this year's budget. Okay, so we are left with roughly $1.1 million out of next year's budget. So total purchase price for the new series is roughly $1.6 million. Also, we did conduct a bid for purchase of new transportation vehicles that was approved by the board about two months ago, and the lease for those vehicles comes onboard next year, $95,000. So when you add up the six items that are listed there, it's $13.5 million in terms of an increase right there. And a point of comparison with the Act I index, the Act I index at 1.9% only generates $3 million. So that's a $10 million spread right there. So how do we make up that difference and only be left with roughly a $2.5 million deficit? Well, there were cuts in other areas, there were reductions in areas. Healthcare is a good example. We negotiated new healthcare plans for the school district, and that actually lowered a million dollars out of the budget compared to this year. So there were some reductions in areas. I give my kudos to the cabinet members and department heads. We asked those individuals to go back and reexamine their budget, take a hard look to see what we might be able to postpone or forego, tighten the belt. So we did make some major changes from the preliminary to the final budget to get that imbalance down to roughly $2.5 million. But you can see the major challenges that we're faced with on the expenditure side. Okay, this is a pie chart. It's a breakdown of our expenditures by an accounting term called the object. And the two largest pieces of the pie, the blue and the green, represent our salary and benefits. So we are a service organization, service-related organization, and it stands to reason that the majority of our expenses come from people. So our salaries and benefits represent roughly three-quarters of our total expenditures. And the other slices of the pie are much smaller percent. Transfers to capital reserve, we have nothing budgeted next year, but that's part of the 5% total in the upper-left-hand corner. Our debt service is included in that 5%. So there are a number of other fixed costs beyond just the salary and benefits, but the salary and benefits carry the lion's share in terms of total expenditures out of the school district budget. And North Penn is not any different than any other school district in this regard. Roughly two-thirds of most district spending come from those two categories. I want to talk a little bit about Act I. Act I was passed in 2006. Basically puts a cap on a school district's ability to raise taxes beyond an inflationary index, and that is what the Act I index is. It's set each year by the state. It's based on two components, a federal component and a state component, and the Act I index for the upcoming year, as I mentioned earlier, is 1.9%. It did reach a high of 4.4% back in 2008, 2009, but it has dipped down to 1.9%. We're even lower than we were last year. Last year, the index was 2.1, it's 1.9 now for the upcoming year. And it also included the IFO, Independent Fiscal Office of Pennsylvania. They do projections on the Act I index for the next four years. And you can see from the chart that the Act I index is projected to increase over the next couple of years, not by a dramatic amount. 2.2% for 16-17, up to about 2.6% in 19-20, but still well short of the high of 4.4% just a few years ago. I want to talk about the Act I index and what are called exceptions that are allowed by PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education. So the Act I index of 1.9% for North Penn School District may only be exceeded if the district applies for, receives, and utilizes one of four existing exceptions that exist in the law. And those four exceptions that exist in the law are for retirement, pension, special education, electoral debt, and grandfather debt, both of which do not apply to North Penn School District. So really, the only two that would ever apply moving forward would be retirement and special education. Electoral debt would only apply if there would be a referendum, and grandfather debt would never apply in the future for North Penn. So the district did apply for a retirement exception with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We were not eligible for the special education exception this year. And we did receive confirmation from PDE that we could utilize a retirement exception totaling $2.1 million, which means that taxes could be increased up to 3.22% if the full amount of that exception would be used. Not our recommendation, but that is available based on PDE's approval. So just hypothetically, if the district would utilize the Act I index of 1.9% plus the retirement exception, factor that in, with the 3.22% tax increase, there still would be a $433,000 deficit in the budget. Much smaller, but there would still be a deficit. Again, our recommendation is to utilize the Act I index of 1.9% only. Okay, I'd like to spend a couple of slides now talking about the retirement rate. I think I mentioned when we presented the preliminary budget, Governor Corbett, a couple of years ago, called retirement, pension, and piecers a tapeworm of the state budget. It's really a tapeworm of North Penn's budget also, so I think that was well said and well put in context. North Penn School District must pay an employer's share of retirement for all individuals that are eligible for pension in the school district. Virtually all public employees that work for North Penn are eligible. So for the 15-16 year, this rate is set by the Pension Board. We have no choice on the rate. It's 25.84%. So we can't say, "Well, you know what, we can only afford 15% next year, let's just pay 15%." It doesn't work that way. Also, we can't say, "You know what, we're flush with money, let's pay 30%." It doesn't work that way. You pay what you're told. So we pay 25.84% next year. We're paying 21.4% this year. So next year, 25 cents of every dollar earned in employee salary will go out the door in terms of our share of the pension obligation. Keep in mind, we do get one-half back from the state. If I could direct your eyes to the first row, going back to 2010, just a mere five years ago, the employer rate was 5.64%. So we've gone from 5.64% to 25.84% in a mere five years, which has had roughly a $24 million impact on the North Penn budget during that period of time. Tremendous, tremendous amount. And quite frankly, it's unsustainable moving forward. So the percentage increase in the rate next year is 21%. And moving forward, the picture doesn't look any prettier. We do expect the employer's share of pension to increase from 25.84% up to roughly 32% in 19-20, and unfortunately, stay somewhere between 30 and 32% for roughly 20, 25 years. Okay, so it's not like we can get over the hump and it's going to go back down to the 5% like it was five, six years ago. That's not the case. Now, you may have heard of some proposed legislation that was introduced that could potentially have an impact and lower the employer rate moving forward. Dr. Dietrich and I looked at some of those numbers this afternoon. They're not large reductions, they don't occur for four or five years, and I guess the point to keep in mind at this point is only proposed at this point. Nothing is concrete. So the only projections we have to go off of right now are the existing laws and regulations clearly indicate that we're going to be heading up to about 32% employer share over the next couple of years. And the retirement expense as a percent of our total budget, as you would imagine, has just mushroomed over the last couple of years. In 10-11, when that rate was down at 5% for the employer contribution, retirement represented about 3% of the North Penn budget. Now, we're over 13% of our total budget goes to the retirement expense alone. Okay, I'd like to move on now and talk about our fund balance. Fund balance would be the school district's reserves. Some people refer to fund balance as the rainy day fund or retain earnings. It's really important for a school district for a number of reasons. It helps mitigate tax increases. It helps handle situations where there might be an imbalance in a budget for a particular year. It certainly helps with a district's bond rating. Every time we go out and borrow money for a building renovation project, one of the first things that Moody's, our rating agency, looks at is the amount of reserves or fund balance that the school district maintains. And our fund balance is broken up into, it's really three primary parts, but we also have a piece of inventory that's accounted for, $204,000. But the three main pieces would be unassigned, assigned for our self-insurance fund, and our commitment to piecers. So all these happen via board resolution, in particular, the commitment to piecers and the assignment for self-funded insurance. So our audited figures through June 30, 2014, were a total of $38 million. Now, keep in mind, your ending fund balance, your projected ending fund balance can never exceed 8% of total expenditures, so it's something to keep in mind for the unassigned piece. So at the end of 13-14, our unassigned fund balance was roughly 7.5%, but $38 million total fund balance, a pretty good number relative to our total expenditures. Now, our projections for the end of this fiscal year, that $38 million would go down to roughly $35.9 million would be our projection. Now, we did move $3 million out of the assignment for self-funded insurance. Again, that was a board resolution that was passed back in October. So on the previous slide, you saw a $5.7 million figure for self-insurance. That figure is now 2.7 at the end of the year because we physically moved the money into our internal service fund, our self-insurance fund. But nonetheless, at the end of the year, we are projecting $35.9 million. For the proposed final budget, the fund balance would drop down to $33.3 million, and our unassigned fund balance would be $17 million. With our recommendation in front of the board, we are recommending utilizing $1 million next year in our piecers fund balance, the commitment to piecers. So our current piecers fund balance is $14.4 million. We are recommending taking that down to $13.4 million, and we have had multiple discussions with our finance committee, taking a look at our long-term plan in terms of utilizing the commitment to piecers in terms of a rate stabilization fund, if you will. So we are planning on using 13, I'm sorry, $1 million to bring that figure down to $13.4 million next year. But total fund balance, $33.3 million, it's still a pretty good number overall. And our unassigned fund balance, just historically, looking back to '08-'09, the unassigned fund balance was roughly $11.4 million. It'll reach nearly $19 million at the end of this fiscal year, and then drop down again, but still a pretty good number in terms of the unassigned fund balance, keeping it right around 8%. An unassigned fund balance can be used for any purpose of the school district. It doesn't need to be used for any specific purpose, it can be used for anything. Okay, I'd like to move on to revenues now, the other half of the equation when it comes to budget development, and talk briefly about some of our major revenue highlights. First off, North Penn School District receives roughly 80% of its revenue from local sources. And what we mean by local sources are primarily real estate taxes. Actually, real estate taxes represent over 80% of the school district's revenue that comes in. And the reason why there's a heavy reliance on local sources is simply the fact that only 19% of the overall budget comes from state sources. So state sources come from things like our basic education subsidy, special education subsidy, retirement subsidy, and so on and so forth. So roughly 80/20, let's call it, local to state. So what would be a more common pie chart throughout the state? Probably two-thirds local, one-third Probably two-thirds local, one-third state. So you can see from this, we do receive a much lower share than probably the statewide average. And this ties into a work session we had a couple of months ago, talking about a fair funding formula at the state level. Okay, our breakout of local revenue. Again, the largest piece of our local revenue comes from real estate taxes and interim taxes, 88 percent, largest piece of our pie. The second-largest piece comes from our earned income tax, the EIT, earned income tax. The school district receives one-half of 1 percent out of the earned income tax. But real estate really carries the day, unfortunately, for the school, based on our total revenue allocation. I want to talk about real estate taxes and our tax base for a moment. Our tax base is nothing more than the total assessed value of all properties in North Penn School District, both of the properties in Montgomery County and the few properties that we have in Bucks County. So our total tax base is very important because when you apply the tax rate, that determines the total revenue that's collected. And we did have a period of time back in 2009, '10 to '10, '11 where we actually saw some contraction in our tax base. It was just very, very unusual for a suburban school district. And the reason for the contraction that year, with the economic downturn, there was a large number of taxpayer assessment appeals, where property owners appealed their assessed value had reductions and actually lowered the overall tax base for North Penn School District. But since then, the tax base has actually grown, roughly 1 to 1.5 percent a year, is pretty good growth over the last couple of years. So that is clearly a sign of an economic recovery, and that certainly helps when it comes to generating additional revenue for the school district. Okay, the earned income tax, the second-largest source of our local revenue. During the economic downturn, we also saw a reduction in our earned income tax, just like we did with the tax base. There were a couple of years where the earned income tax went down or was flat, but in the last three years in particular, we are seeing some nice growth in our earned income tax. We have $13.9 million budgeted this year for the EIT, the earned income tax, and we're expecting to collect roughly between 15 and 15.5 million. So we're going to exceed the EIT budget by roughly 1 to 1.5 million dollars this year. So what we did for next year, we are a little less conservative perhaps than we've been in previous years. We did increase the earned income tax projection and budget for next year all the way up to $15 million. So from a budget-to-budget standpoint, we increased the earned income tax by $1.1 million. Okay, on to the state revenues, the second-largest source of our revenues. The largest source of our state revenues, yes, Mr. Sullivan?
I just wanted to bring up a point. The health insurance of $1 million and savings, and that 1.1 represents $2.1 million of effort to reduce the deficit.
Correct.
I just thought, I mean, that's 25 percent of that.
Two big pieces right there. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, the state revenue allocation, the largest piece now of our state revenue sources comes from pension reimbursement, which is 34 percent now. So one-third of all of our state subsidy comes from the fact that we're paying the employer's share of pension, one-half of which we receive back in the form of the subsidy. 21 percent of our state sources come from our basic education subsidy and 14 percent from special education. But that pension piece, the 34 percent, continues to grow and grow and grow. So rarely would you say that an increase in a revenue source is bad news, but in this case, it's a bad, it's bad news because it means one thing, that means the expense is going up. Okay, in terms of the governor's proposed budget, Governor Wolf proposed his budget back in early March. And for North Penn School District, in the basic education and special education subsidy, Governor Wolf proposed an increase of $828,220 for those two particular items. And in our preliminary budget, we had no increase in under those light items. However, what we've done between the preliminary budget and the proposed final budget, we did increase that amount by $500,000. Again, not knowing where the state budget will land, and everyone expects the state budget will be passed after our budget is passed. So we felt comfortable in adding $500,000 into the budget at this point in time. And I think Dr. Dietrich would like to make a comment about that.
Just so everybody's clear on that, that $500,000 budgeted out of the 828 being proposed by the governor, that difference there of $328,220 does come with strings attached, if you will, in that we've gotten communication from the governor and the Secretary of Education asking us to identify how that money would be spent. So it's something that, you know, has a lot of uncertainty to it, but it doesn't mean that if we get actually $828,000, that it would make a difference in our bottom line. Fund balance, for example, in fact, there are strings attached to that, that we are asked to show the state how we would spend that money if we got that additional 300-plus thousand dollars.
Thank you. Okay, moving on now to the tax impact to our residents, North Penn School District. As you know, North Penn School District is broken into two counties, Montgomery County and Bucks County. And a rebalancing occurs every year based on the total assessed value of each entity in each county. So for the proposal we're recommending this evening, Montgomery County residents would have a 1.9 percent tax increase, the Act One limit. For Bucks County, again, due to the rebalancing of the assessed value, the increase actually comes out to 3.7 percent. And that would be the maximum amount under the Act One Index per PDE. So applying the average homestead assessment in Montgomery County, as an example, which is $147,965, applying the 1.9 percent tax increase or millage increase, that would result in the average homestead increase of $65. And based on some preliminary numbers we received regarding the gaming funds, the homestead tax reduction for a homestead in Montgomery County would be $198. So the $198 is about $3 or $4 higher than it is in the current year. So that would be a reduction off of an individual's tax bill based on the gaming revenue that is distributed throughout the state. In Bucks County, a 3.7 percent increase, the average homestead assessment there is $22,000. Forty-three properties are eligible for the homestead exemption there. The increase in Bucks County would be $103, and Bucks County residents would also receive the $198 gaming reduction.
And just so we're clear on that also, there are a lot of things happening right now in Harrisburg. The governor does have a proposal that would reduce the property tax by channeling money from increased income tax and increased sales tax, and it would channel it back into the homestead reduction, so that number would change if the governor would have his proposal passed. On the other side of the aisle, the Republicans are proposing some changes also, and theirs, though, would not be a homestead channel type of proposal, according to the one that has the most discussion right now. That would be an across-the-board reduction. And now I'm reading also that there's likely to be additional proposals coming from some Republicans also. So there's going to be a lot of discussion regarding property tax and all the various ways that they might reduce property tax by increasing personal income tax and increasing sales tax.
Okay, so where we stand now, we're in the middle of May. We are scheduled for final budget adoption at the June 18 action meeting. So our plan between now and then is to continue to review our revenues and expenditures and make adjustments where we can, based on new data, new information, and also refine our current year estimates. We'll work with the finance committee at our upcoming meeting on May 26, and we will present then a final budget adoption for your consideration at the June 18 meeting. And just a reminder again why we're asking for your approval tonight at a work session, per the law, we do need a 30-day period of public inspection in between the proposed final budget adoption and final budget adoption. So had we waited until the May action meeting, there would not have been enough time in between the two meetings in order to meet the 30-day requirement. We did distribute what's called the PDE 2028, that's the Pennsylvania Department of Education Budget Document Forum. We emailed that to you, and we did distribute hard copies. We also have that document available, posted on the website for public inspection. Just a note, that is still subject to change between now and final budget. We don't anticipate large-scale changes like we did in the past couple of months, but nonetheless, there could be some additional changes between now and then. I do not anticipate our recommendation of the Act One Index of 1.9 percent to change between now and then, however.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Shiroki, while you're standing there? Steve, in five years, PERS has caused the district $24 million increase. You know what I could do with $24 million?
Balance a budget.
More than that, I mean, that's a phenomenal amount of money to be putting into one thing. And that's money that's been taken away from other things that could have been used for other things. So it's a pretty big hardship for us, and it's not even hit the top yet, right?
That's right.
32 percent in three more years?
That's correct.
32 cents on every dollar, just for that retirement package. It's a big burden for a lot of people, so it should be a top priority for Harrisburg. I would like to take exception to something Dr. Dietrich said, though, that we have to explain what we're going to do with $328,000 if they give it to us. How come we don't get to ask them what they do with the money we give them now?
Yeah, but we have to explain it, and we don't even know if we're going to get it.
That's the craziest thing.
What do they think we're going to spend it?
Yeah. Who knows?
No, but that's the best part. Tell us what you're going to do with it, we're not sure you're going to get it, but tell us, eh, tell us what you're going to do with it. We can put that money on the shelf.
What are you going to do with it?
Reimbursement for buildings that we didn't get.
Yeah, they give you, I think it's 12 or 13 different options, and we have another, about a week to complete the document. So we're going to have a discussion on Thursday about it. We're looking at different proposals, what you might be able to do with that money. I mean, like Mr. Kerr was saying, they're asking us to submit that at this point in time with, of course, no promises that'll happen. There's all, they're getting competing emails and competing memos, you know, about this from different points of view. But there's a, there's a lot happening. Steve and I were talking about this. I can't recall in 30-plus years in public education having more moving parts at this time of the year than we have now. And we thought we had a lot of moving parts before, but there's a lot of discussion about the property tax and, you know, what they might do with their earned income, excuse me, their personal income tax and the sales tax, different proposals on what's taxable and what wouldn't be taxable. You know, a lot of discussion then on how they want to handle the pension issue and a lot of moving parts going on right now in Harrisburg.
Prediction, they'll kick the can down the road. They usually will be here next year with the same.
We had a $13 million increase in his top six items. We've covered 11 of it. We still have to come up with 2.5 million. So we're a long way from finished, this job. We have a motion in a second, and we're going to advertise it, and we'll have it published for more than 30 days, and the final adoption is set for June 18 meeting. Do we have any further discussion to add to this tonight?
Just that, I'd like to, Mr. Shirok did a really good job on putting this budget together and fine-tuning things and sort of making a real, an unrealistic situation realistic and, you know, palatable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for being the executive officer on the Titanic.
Oh, my goodness.
It's not that bad, you're right. We saw the iceberg coming. We were prepared for it.
We're still so far in the lifeboat.
All right.
We moved a long time ago because it's, it takes a long time to move those big ships.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Budget is approved. Motion to adjourn the special action meeting? Thank you.